Excuse me, Tacoma Park City Council order. For court please call the roll. I'm here.
President.
Here.
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 President.
Here.
Since it's Thursday night budget work session, the next item on the agenda is public comment period. Anybody have any comments? Unless they're awfully short, I don't think they do. So we will move to the budget work session.
You want us to put this ahead of schedule?
Yes, let's try and stay there. So the first thing is additional information from the acting city manager, unless we're going to have entertainment first.
Singing and dancing.
And there's some information in our packet and you're going to give us some additional information.
I did want to go through probably the answers for the information that I gathered in response to your request and just make a couple of comments before we go into this evening. The first thing I just want to note is that I do have some corrected FTE information in the package that you received based on the information that we received from the director of recreation at the last work session because there was a clarification of Sunday hours and I wanted to make sure that that was corrected.
And the first place that's corrected information appears is in the printed copy we have tonight or in earlier versions?
It was in the version I sent to you.
Okay.
But for the general public, it's in what it's what we've got today. And I wanted to make a little bit of a talk just a few minutes about FTEs, full-time employee equivalents, because there's several different ways to calculate them and several different ways that you can categorize them. And as I've been learning Tacoma Park is not being consistent over time and isn't consistent among the departments exactly about how they're calculated. The different kinds of FTEs can be, I think, divided kind of into three categories. You've got your regular employees, they could be full or part-time, but they work continuously for the city and that that's something and they're considered an ongoing employee. You sometimes have employees that are employed for a particular demand-related service paid by a rental or a program fee. We may have something where as the information talks about the rental of the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center for the floor hockey league in the coming year on Sundays. It needs to be staffed, but it's entirely it would otherwise be closed, but because it's being paid for as a rental, we have a staff person there. And so that's entirely related to that. And then we also have a way of calculating employees which are miscellaneous part-time employees for which there's a pool of money that we use. And so we need to have number of hours filling in staff at the reception desk for that kind of thing. We have X amount of money and we see who's available and we kind of, you know, somebody might just work two hours a month, but you know, it's kind of a group. And so the general way that that has been calculated by some departments is to take the pot of money and divide it by the average wage and say that equates to X amount of an employee or not. And otherwise, in another way that we have to categorize employees, if we have to keep track of the individual people because we may have retirement amounts to pay and that kind of thing for those positions. So one of the things that I don't have time to do immediately, but I think is an important thing, is for the city to identify a standard way of calculating FTEs so that they're comparable across years and across departments. And we've got the budget that's in front of us, but I just want to let you know that it became very clear that we need to have kind of an adopted policy about how those are identified and calculated.
And where in the description that you just gave, do the communications part-time that were going to be changed, where how was that category?
Those in the past haven't been included.
At all.
At all. But they are, the majority of them are, of those that would become a full-time positions, there's about probably four ongoing people who've been here year after year. So they are kind of year-round, but part-time. And then there's a variety of other miscellaneous part-time for festivals. And then we have contract staff that has some specialized duties that we bring in when we need those specialized duties. So for when it used to be that we didn't have a lot of activity for them, it was kind of easier just to think of them as, at first we categorized them as interns, but in effect, but they were not interns. And then we just didn't, we just put kind of aside a pot of money and nobody counted how many hours that was and it wasn't reflected in the budget documents.
So has programming changed significantly since last year?
No, but it has changed significantly since about two years ago. And so last year we kind of got a good baseline of information and it was clear that unless there were some significant changes in what we want done and how we want things covered, it looked like that amount would be pretty constant in the coming years.
Is there any other catalyst that is forcing the council to make the decision this year to put them as full-time or city employees?
Well, it has to do with, it has to do with labor law and we can talk about that offline, but it's simply the way that, the way that certain folks need to be handled when the work is ongoing. The, also, it's been, it's been interesting to me that when I was first appointed acting city manager in September, it never occurred to me that I would put forward a budget that had 5.5 FTE as an increase. It is not something that I would have ever thought would be done. There were a couple of things that I knew needed to be addressed. One was the city TV staff, but the other was the issue that the police department had a problem in trying to find a person to do their position that was half a dispatch supervisor and half an emergency management coordinator. And so I came to the council and I mentioned that that was a problem. I got permission to go ahead and fill as a full-time position, the dispatch supervisor. And not a lot of resistance, but not a lot of affirmative response either about the concept of the halftime emergency management coordinator. So, so that is before you at this point. Also, while I met with you in November and January, you made it very clear you wanted Sunday hours in the library and the computer center and, and you didn't even want to wait till the new fiscal year. So we did some scrambling on that and worked and came up with, I think, a responsible proposal for how that gets done. It's very tight in terms of the FTEs for the library in particular, but I think it is, and as you'll see in the paperwork, I think it is justified. I was happy to learn that we did get an offer about changing the way we do cable television grant money. That is real possibility, I think it's a likelihood. Certainly the county wants us to take this changed way of receiving funds so that we have a larger proportion of the funds as cable operating grants rather than capital grants. These funds would be able to pay for all the staffing and cable in city TV. Currently, the operating funds that we get just about pays for the staffing. But this would give a lot more flexibility in terms of payments of staffing and other kinds of operating costs of equipment. I also, in that discussion, learned that we could pay for some of the IT services that are related to the fiber net and the computers that work with city TV and that can offset some assistance for the IT division. They had been asking for an administrative assistant, which I did not want to provide because I did not want to add an FTE, but when, a half FTE. But when it was determined that those funds would be able to come from non-taxpayer generated funds, I did put it forward.
Can you, can you just clarify? You were saying, never mind what you were saying. If you can just clarify, the, there are some funds now that go to pay for some communications function.
Yes.
And are you saying that when you take those funds and add the potential for the new division of the funds between capital and operating, that the operating piece and the existing would cover the existing designated staff and the conversion of however they were funded before to the two FTE? Or are you saying that the combination of the funds covers more than that?
Well, it's, the, the new amount of funds covers much more than that. And so if you look in the budget book, I think we have a, you know, the, where we indicate how much general fund goes towards the communication division, I think it's about a minus 250, 250,000, because we are able to, with the proposal, have a good amount of funds for cable TV related things. It can't be spent on things that are not that.
Right, right. I wanted to get-
But it does allow for us to cover the benefits and the other kinds of things that would come with the, with the full-time positions rather than the part-time positions, as well as some IT-related service and a variety of equipment purchases and maintenance that is something that the general fund has been paying.
I just wanted to get that clarification because the way you phrased it, you could interpret it as it covered the staffing and no more.
What I was saying was that in the past year, the amount that we got for operating just barely covered the staffing.
Okay, so it was the amount that we've proven, that we've been currently getting?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
The other thing, just that, I guess, two, two more quick points. As you know, with the fall in speed camera revenue, I looked at what was funded by the speed camera fund and I've moved out all the staff that are not speed camera associated out of the speed camera fund. And I think that that's the correct way of handling things. I think that it's good to make sure that, you know, if for some reason that program would go away, the only people that would be affected are those that operate the program. And finally, a reminder about the general fund fund balance. This is the, the kind of the key piece that the finance director looks at. In this proposed budget, the fund balance of the general fund is 3,899,280. Of that, 3 million needs to be the cushion for the way that accounts bounce throughout the year, fluctuate. So there's up to 899,000 dollars that is available for kind of one-time expenditures or savings as we go through the discussions on the reconciliation. In terms of the information that is provided in your package, I have pretty much just gone through the staffing additions and changes in each department. For those who do want to look into it more clearly, it is indicated in the package and there's the, there's a chart that's associated, it's attached to this, that people can go through and see what each of the different positions are. To clarify the change on the recreation department, only, I had previously said that their entire increase for, I guess, net increase for the recreation department was for Sunday hour, was related to Sunday hours and that is incorrect. In fact, only, let's see. I think only .25 FTE is for the Sunday hours in the community center. A halftime position was added to, for service for additional children in the afternoon addition program where you have to have a certain number of staff per number of children. And that's completely offset by the fees for afternoon addition. And then there's the .28 FTE position, which is the staffing for the rented New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center on Sundays by the floor hockey league. I did provide in the package some information on vehicle miles and miles per gallon of, of the various vehicles. We are assembling this information as part of the sustainability action plan and so we should have a much more coherent document showing multiple years, age of cars and that kind of thing to you as part of the work that the Brendel Group is doing on the sustainable, sustainability action plan. Nevertheless, we do have that information and if there's something else that's more specific that you need to know very shortly, I can have Daryl run a specialized report on that. I was asked if the city received money for the additional crossing guard that's been posted at Tacoma Junction. I don't believe it has. We have, the police department is looking into getting the, the count that's needed to be done by the county so that it can justify the rebate for that position.
And that's for the, for one or for two?
That's for the second one.
For the second one. So we do have the rebate for the first?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
But we don't have, for the, we've not, I don't think we've asked for the, for the second. And so that's what we're looking into. I was asked to provide a greater detail of cost breakdown on the agenda cover sheets and we are doing that. There've been several different questions about looking at kind of the comparison of fringe costs in different departments versus wage costs. In the police department, the biggest difference has to do with employees that get, that are sworn officers, so we've got an additional contribution going for the police retirement In the public works department, some of our wages went down because we have had had a number of longtime staff retire or leave and so the new staff at the lower end of the bracket are now employed, so it's, it's lower wages, but we still have the fringes that are associated with the folks. Later on in the list, there was questions about the recreation department fringes and the general government fringes. In the recreation department, one of the things that our new HR director has learned through the course of her few months here is that we have not been paying some retirement funds for some of our part-time staff. They are triggered after they hit 500 hours of employment in a year. And so there were a number of people that were not getting a contribution that should have been made for them. So we've been figuring that in. When you have a department that has a large number of part-time employees, that, that made the change in the fringes from last year to this year. Similarly, with the general government, the, the council also is getting retirement and health benefits in the coming year. And so those are, there was the increase in fringes in the general government budget is almost entirely associated with that.
And the retirement costs that you're speaking of are for the city's portion of the contribution?
And the staff has to too, which they're not thrilled about.
So the staff has to go through what the council went through some time ago with a retroactive payment?
Yes, we're going, we're working through that and determining what we need to do with, with them. There is information, there was a question about how much money is the city earning from the solar power purchase agreements? And the answer basically is that we're not earning money, but we are expected to save money. Our estimated cost of saving on our PEPCO bills is about $6,000 in the first year. As we go through the coming years, we'll see kind of how those projections pan out. I do have quite a long section in here about if the 1.16 FTEs for the library and the computer learning center are really needed for Sunday hours. I am convinced that they are. I don't think that we could get by on less than that for the kinds of services that are required to meet normal standards for public libraries. And I actually think we're a little bit undercounting it and that it's going to be tight. I have also provided information on auditorium use, auditorium use and revenue and for the, we do have, we've gone through the listing of activities for this room, for example. And so in this, it lists how many hours are spent, I mean, how many different events are undertaken in this, in this facility. Our city TV staff also does coverage of festivals and other events and activities. They not only video, but they also, even for things that are not recorded, help with the audio assistance for something where a microphone is needed. The auditorium is expected to generate about $16,000 in rental fees for this year. We, we do more things for free than we rent for, but nevertheless, that's, that's the amount that we're expected this year. We did follow up on a question about, could the city save money by changing its contract with Montgomery County for rental inspections if Montgomery County went to every three-year rental inspections? And when we, when we checked, we were told, well, gee, they're thinking about switching to the every year because it works better here than it does in, in where they do inspections every three years. They're having the discussions now with the county council about the possibility of, of changing that. They do not yet have a, have a estimated cost of what the contract could be renegotiated for. They're in the midst of their discussions with the county council and haven't had a chance to do that yet, but we're still waiting for that information. There was a question about can we get the property taxes for the Washington McLoughlin property? And I will say that we've got at least a three-quarters inch stack of paper documents related to this. It is going to take some legal work and the, there's a lot of confusion about that. The county is supposed to be collecting the taxes for us and we will be pushing forward that.
This invites the question, the county has a lot more legal resources than we do. They are a source of complication that we are not in this and they're owed money also. What about getting the county to do the legal work?
I think the county should, I think the county should do the bulk of the work and that's what we're pressing for.
Cool.
Did, did the county give them some kind of?
They gave them some pilots for portions of their property.
Large proportions, if I recall, with the tax records.
Yeah, because it was depending on the use, I thought.
Well, some things, some things were kind of miscategorized and some other things, so there's more investigation in that. And I mean, it's, it's not just what shows up on the paper. I think there's some real investigation that has to go for that. It's, it is a, it is a very complicated situation.
Of course, we'd also like to see something worthwhile and inoffensive happen with the property.
Right.
Would you judge that this is a, from the county's point of view, a politically tender matter?
Actually, I don't think so. From the documents that I've seen, certainly the county has pushed pretty hard on them for some aspects of, of the payments. So, so I, I didn't see a sensitivity kind of in what I saw, you know, kind of a hedging around, dealing with it. Nevertheless, my eyes were crossing looking through these documents and we're just, just not at the point where I can tell you where it's going.
So there was, there's a lot still to be determined, but would you characterize the term of the, the length of time, the number of years that, that is in potential dispute or question as a relatively short period of time or a longer period of time? Has this been going on for some time kind of under the radar or is it a more recent phenomenon?
I thumbed through the pages. I saw stuff from 2008 and before, so it's been going on at least since then.
So at least five years?
On a completely different topic, the IT director indicated that the, that the information on the phones was very wrong in the, in the document. There, there's about 60 staff cell phones. There's, the count that was listed in the document, in the narrative, kind of grouped everything related to modems and police cars, the, essentially the walkie-talkie kind of phones that the public work staff use, all is the same kind of thing. And I, I do think that a wholesale look at phones is appropriate and I think that it certainly will be part of the replacement of the desk phone system that needs to take place. So there may very well be a net decrease in a lot of the instruments as we go through that process. Let's see, in general government for legislative, there were questions about why it was the supply line up and the, or down and the miscellaneous line up. The supply line usually is zero for, for the council for supplies because you don't need a lot of supplies. The, in this particular case, the council chairs were, were charged to that line, so it had an amount in it. The miscellaneous account, for some reason, is where the cost of elections is charged. And so every other year it goes up and every other year it goes down. And, and that's the issue and explanation for that.
I know that I'm going to request certain electoral-related promotional activities, completely nonpartisan, of course, but, you know, informational activities later-
Right.
-as we get into the election season. I have no idea how much they would cost, but they could involve mailings and so on. I suppose that there could be fund transfer as necessary at that time.
Yeah, in fact, since this budget has gone forward, the city clerk has mentioned that it's, it would probably be, you know, some monies are probably going to be needed for that. We don't know that amount yet, but I think we should anticipate, you know, somewhere in the, anywhere between like 5 and 15,000, depending on how, you know, what kind of activities you come up to.
We haven't discussed the activities yet.
Right.
I guess, I guess at some point in a few months, we anticipate, within the next couple of months, anticipating doing electoral, setting parameters for some of the stuff that we've been discussing recently.
Right, so I think at that time, a budget amendment would be appropriate.
It would be a budget amendment for FY14 or 13?
Probably, well, probably FY14. My guess is that we could probably accommodate what's needed unless you come up with something very substantial right away. I think we probably could accommodate some little bit this year and then after July 1, I think most of the expenses would, would take place. Within, within the package, there's information that the recreation director provided and you can go through that at your leisure and follow up with him if you'd like. It does include a chart of information from his kind of personal budget about how different lines are charged in terms of how much money comes in and how much money goes out. We do have, and it's clarified in the notes, the, certain of the expenses for the items referred to as- referred to as classes and it says TL programs, Tacoma Lane, that's the old name in the, in the system for the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, that the, that the charges, the expenses there, 20,000 there and 47.5 in classes, is all money that is paid to contracted teachers or instructors. The funds for the contractual services, that says Tacoma Lane, the contractual services, the revenue of $12,678 is money that is after the fact. It is the, the programs, the, the classes take in the money directly, payments from the students or members, and then the instructor keeps a cut and the remainder comes to the city. So that revenue is that remainder. In going back to the, kind of the regular part of the package, I did provide the level of debt compared to the taxable base over the five-year period. And you'll see that in 2009, 2010, 2011, we were in the 31 to 33% ratio of debt balance to assessments. It dropped to 23% in, 0.23%, I guess, in 2012 and 0.15%, yeah, sorry, in 2013 because we paid off the large debts on the, on the community center.
Could I just ask a technical question on this one? I thought 373 was the proposed debt payment this year and the last year we had put, so I thought in the FY14 budget, we had 373 proposed and in the FY13 budget, we had 2 million. Is it off by one year possibly?
I'll go back and check.
Okay.
I think it's off by one year, but let me just go back and check. And then I was asked for kind of the amount of tax revenue per penny for fiscal year 2014. And the proposed tax rate in the, in my proposed budget is the same as last year and there's actually three different tax rates. There's 58 cents per $100 assessed value for the real property tax, which makes up the vast majority of the revenue. But for personal property, the tax per penny is, well, the, the proposed tax rate is $1.55 for a $100 assessed value. And for public utilities, it's $1.57 per $100 assessed value. Those amounts overall, you know, overall don't make a lot of money, but they are different than our personal property tax rate, I mean, our real property tax rate. It should be noted that the constant yield, as provided by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation, was, would be 60.2 cents per $100 assessed value if, if we wanted the same amount of revenue this year as we got last year.
And can you just say a few words about my question to you earlier today about the ripple effect, whether there were other places that the setting of the tax rate had an effect on the revenues that we anticipate in a budget?
Right, it used to be that a change in the tax rate for real property had affected a number of other calculations in the budget. And there was a certain proportion that was put aside for contingency. There still is on a different kind of contentious, smaller contingency amount. And it used to be that the personal property and the public utility tax rate would also be affected by a change in, because we always tied them, we had about the same amount.
It was always two and a half times the rate.
That's right, so it was, it was always tied to that. We disassociated those. The old 2% contingency requirement, I think we probably got rid of about five years ago. Doesn't actually make sense the way it's written in the code and, because as soon as you increase it, then you have to increase it again, just the nature of the, of the wording. And, and so that was not needed and it's, and it's not been followed to the wording in the document. What we do have is a half a percent contingency, which, so we multiply everything by .005 for a little bit of additional impact for every penny that you put on the tax rate.
And, and that multiplier used to be much bigger?
Used to be a lot bigger, yeah. So it's, it's essentially not important. Also within the package, council member Smith had submitted some information on the Manup College Success Program and that is attached to the back of your package item. And in the document for later on, for discussion later on, I guess it's the second to the last page, is the list of reconciliation items that you either mentioned here or sent to me, just so that there's something written on the table. I don't know that, that you all want these on this list, but I tried to at least put out what I knew about. I did go ahead and indicate, you know, one of the ideas, one of the pieces of information is that we will need to accommodate $112,000 for the worker compensation increase when we got, from, when we got that, that estimate, that higher premium cost. And so we can talk about those things later. But I did want to go through this package for those who are watching on television and encourage people to go through and look at the details.
I'm not clear about this table. For instance, where at least, just choosing the first item, keep dollars for Tacoma Junction to a minimum, 200,000. Is that the amount that would be the minimum or is that the amount that would be cut from?
That would be the amount cut, and I just picked that.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
But, so it, we don't have the balances like on the Paper Street project. What would be the balance if 15 is cut? Would that be?
15 would be the amount cut. So you had, you, it was.
So what would remain?
Five. It was 20 minus 15.
Sorry, I was digging.
So the concept is under revenue, this is money that would be added in as additional.
Yeah, okay.
But one of the things, as, what I certainly hope is that by the end of the evening, I have a, a full list of at least of items so that we can go and tie down numbers related to them, so that that can come back to you to, to really be able to think about balancing or choosing from.
And, but it sounds like, following up on council member Grimes' question, it might be helpful for those amounts to, to say, like in the case of the Paper Street project, 15,000 of 20,000, so that we have those figures in context.
Right.
I, I have a, I have a question that's actually related to the budget, but this is an opportunity to ask it, two questions actually. For the cable operating grant funds, I, I find the, I find the whole topic confusing because of the restrictions and, you know, why don't we handle that as a special revenue fund?
We actually do. We, what we've, we have in the past, put it in the.
Seems to go into the general fund.
We actually, we actually, yes, we actually have done the capital amounts in the special revenue fund, but with the larger amounts, we were looking at putting it all in the special revenue fund because it is restricted.
But an additional reason that, I guess I would have concerns about the way that we're proposing to budget two more city TV positions is that, you know, those negotiations about creating more essentially labor or staff contributions are not completed. In fact, council just met with, with our attorney on that issue recently.
That's right.
You know, we have no idea of the, of the outcome of, well, I mean, we can guess, but we, there's nothing certain about the outcome of that particular negotiation. And, and we ourselves had questions about that process and our negotiating strategy.
Right.
So.
I think that the, my feeling about that is that not necessarily moving ahead with the halftime IT position is entirely fine. For the city TV positions, if you would be cautious about that way, pending the negotiations, pending the outcome of the negotiations, I would want to go through and identify the cuts in service so that we do not expend those cuts in service, so that we do not do the services and put us in a difficult situation. So that would be for each position, a cut of about one-third of the hours that are spent so far on a routine basis by the city TV staff.
Right, I have a second question that I think, even if there's something here, I don't think anything's going to happen this fiscal year. .5 full-time equivalent outreach to seniors position. Montgomery County spends, if I, if my look at their budget is correct, $20 million in FY13 on seniors, including operating five senior services. And these are services not offered in Tacoma Park, although we occasionally see county representatives here when they're asked to come here. But Tacoma Park residents don't use those facilities. So it's not a duplicative, it, it is a duplicative service. Can we get a rebate for it?
We certainly would try. And I think, you know, there are, it depends on how it's crafted.
Well, yes. If we're the one doing the first crafting, then.
That's right. I mean, so far, Gaithersburg in particular has tried really hard to get rebates for its senior services and it's had a difficult time, even though I think they have a very strong case. But I think that, you know, we should, we should work to make that happen.
So part of the complication is that the Montgomery County senior centers are operated out of their recreation department. This 20 million I mentioned is a cross-departmental funding pool. You can look at the docs yourself. And we don't get a rebate for recreation. So, you know, that actually, I think, is in our favor if we're trying to get something specifically for seniors. So you'll look into it.
Thank you.
And if you can back up once again to the, your answer to council member Mills' question about the cable staff. And I was kind of following you until you got to the one-third reduction and then I thought, oh, wait a minute, I lost you.
Me too.
Basically, the number of hours that are spent not by our full-time staff that exist, but the various part-time.
The various people who, whose part-time hours were not counted.
Right. It is equivalent to about three people's worth of time. So for, the way that I looked at it was that we always need a good, we always need a pool of very flexible people because for festivals or other things, when you need a bunch of people, you need a bunch of people or you might have some very specified skills that a contractor is appropriate for. In kind of looking at how we have, who we've spent the money on in the past, it looks to me about a third of that time that is spent is really in that very flexible area. Wouldn't want to make that a real position. I think we need to have a variety of flexible contractors and part-time staff for that. But there's about two people's worth of hours that is ongoing. And so if you don't do one full-time person, then I think a third of the total number of hours of activities needs to be cut down. Try to do that judiciously, protect revenue, but I think that that's, I think that we would, to be responsible, we would need to do that.
Okay, but look, look that from a different direction. If we did the two full-time equivalent, if we did the two full-time.
Right.
And we continued along with the current situation that we have in terms of revenues because the cable negotiations are not completed or they don't get completed in a way that we anticipate, how does that affect the revenues for those positions that we would have created in the FY14 budget?
I think, I'll look and see, I think we would go just over the amount that the cable operating, current level of cable.
So the current level of, of revenues would, would almost cover what was.
We'd almost cover for the staff, we would not have the operating funds for the equipment and maintenance of equipment that we're also hoping to, to use monies for. But, but for the staff costs per se, we'd be almost there.
I'm, I'm thinking of relating it to how we currently operate. What, what would, what would the shortfall be in terms of covering everything that we do the way we do it now, except that two-thirds of that pool of hours gets converted into the full-time and therefore has the, the fringes and the things that go with it? And so does, does that mean we kind of get to a point where we go, oops, that's the end of the money?
I'll have to look at it more closely. You kind of lost me as we went through that. I think that, I think that, I mean, we just have to watch it very carefully and.
Was, was that getting, how you were looking at it?
I mean, I guess a little bit. I, I was looking at it as, for example, it sounds like our staff, current staff, provide extensive services in this room, taping, editing, producing many events, some of which are paid, some of which, many of which are not paid.
Right.
So I was looking at reducing, and at, reducing the number of FTEs that we add to our balance sheet associated with TV. We've got a part-time specialist position, I can't remember what you called that, that other position. But you've got the two, two full-time and then there was one other IT, I'm sorry.
There was an admin assistant for the IT division, which would be offset by the IT staff that do work this cable TV related.
So what I'm generally interested in is trying to reduce the speed of the growth of our FTEs, not, not eliminate it. And so to me, a reduction, what I guess what I've, what I'm, what I'm interested in is if we have to reduce services associated with not use of this room in terms of people standing on stage and performing functions, but the taping, the production of the stage, if that's where we have to make some, some cuts, that's fine from my perspective. It's not, it's not fine, but if, you know, if we have to deal with trade-offs, it's, it's an acceptable trade-off.
And I guess the piece of it that comes right at the point where you're talking about, that I want to make sure that we understand is, how much, if, if that were to be the case, how much would it be, oh, well, it's just that we don't videotape it or do the things that we do with it? How much would it be, well, we don't have the staff to make the room available because when somebody rents the room, there has to be staff who understands the technology, who sits in the back and runs the soundboard or whatever it is that they do.
I think it would be proactive so that we would not get ourselves in that bind, but it would mean that.
But would it reduce the number of things that we could potentially do in here because we wouldn't have the funds to provide the people to do it, given that most of the things that we do in here don't generate revenue?
One of, I guess, where it could, where it could hurt is that one of the ways that we get Quality Acts to perform for the We Are Tacoma series, which there's not a charge for, is that they basically get publicity out of it by having it accessible online and so they can link to it to their YouTube or whatever accounts. And so they're happy to be here because they can get some other play out of it, not just to the, you know, 100 people in the room. And so I think that's, we may, it may not be that we have fewer events, but if they're not taken to that next level, you know, they may, it may have a deteriorating effect over time.
It may fall off anyway.
Right, so I, I don't know that. I don't know exactly. We'd have to look at it very closely. And we'd be as judicious as we can to, to try to save the programs.
Any other questions anybody has on this particular topic?
Yeah.
I guess, we're, we're each trying to frame this matter in, in ways that we can best understand it. And if we were to assume, if we were to assume that this was a, a special revenue fund because it is restricted money, it's a little bit like speed camera money. We could only use it on public safety and everybody understood that. And in this case, we can only use it on certain things related to, to cable.
Correct.
In the past, at least in currently, most of that money, because of the agreements with the franchise, with the major cable companies, that money has been restricted to capital programs and.
The vast bulk of money is.
The vast bulk of it, up, like one point, we've got a cumulative 1.6 million dollars that we have not figured out a way to spend it. Hence, we are now in the throes of trying to negotiate, not by ourselves, a lot of other peoples, municipalities in the county. And I'm saying this out loud to kind of make sure I'm staying on track. Hope, we're hoping to be, to get some better leverage so that we can spend it on personnel, fringe benefits, programming, sort of the, the soft stuff instead of the, the capital stuff. So we have the special, theoretical special revenue fund. We have this money coming in. The negotiations work out to give us the flexibility. So then we convert these two, equivalent of two. So then, we convert these, uh, two, equivalent of two FTE, part-time people, into permanent two full-time equivalent positions, which is not really a net gain of employees at all. It's just changing their pay stub. Um, so we have then, if that's what's, would happen, then the, then the general fund isn't being affected at all. In fact, if you, if we, we could create four FTEs, or, or, or one FTE, it wouldn't make any differences, because it's all inside this special fund.
That's true. I mean, I think there's, the two aspects are that, um, that there's not taxpayer funds that go into the cable operating grant. In fact, and most of the money is from outside of Tacoma Park anyway, in that, from those funds. Right now, though, we are paying a good amount of, we're starting to pay more and more general fund monies for maintenance, and for small equipment stuff that doesn't count as capital equipment. And so getting that agreement is important also for those funds as well.
That's understood.
That that agreement's important.
Right. And what I, what I, you know, would hope that we don't end up with is, just as we have a big capital fund in the bank, also a big operating fund in the bank that we can't spend. You know, I do think that, that there's good use of the funds available.
And if I can just do one small follow-up on something that Councilmember Schultz's comment led me to. If we did certain things that reduced the ability to have the funds to do the work that puts the programming in here, available on our cable station, do we reach a point where the connection for the source of the revenues from the cable contract is called into question, because we're using it kind of internally and not putting it back on cable?
Yes. If you went to the extreme, it would, it, we'd have to separate the funds. A good reason, a good part of the reason for using the cable funds is because the activities in this room go out on cable, or the internet, this related to that. We would be careful about that, so that we don't break that connection.
Is, is there any, is it a, kind of a amorphous connection in terms of there are not hard, uh, rules, or formulas, or anything like that, that get connected with it? It's just kind of how you interpret it?
I'd say it's, it's not amorphous, but it, it doesn't, there's not a specified formula.
Okay.
That's all I have for this. I, I think, you know, we can come back to discussion of the reconciliation later on, after you have your large grant discussion.
Okay.
If there's no other questions.
Anything else on this additional information? Thank you. Okay. Well, now we're behind schedule.
I feel better.
Discussion of large grant applications. So we last left off discussing this on March 4th, and it was helpful to me to read the, basically, the minutes of that discussion, where when we left off at the bottom of page three, behind this packet cover sheet, um, we had generally agreed to a cap of 150,000, with 20,000 for Cheer, 30,000 for the Crossroads Community Food Network, nothing for Dance Exchange, 15,000 for ECDC, 40,000 for EduCare, $2,115 for the commercial, uh, CDA, Tacoma Lining CDA, 10,000 for the Folk Festival, 15,000 for the Independence Day Activity, and 10,000 for the Commercial Kitchen. And then, yeah, um, and then I think the city, the acting city manager pointed out that the 10,000, 10,000 for the Folk Festival was actually somewhere else in your budget.
It's in the budget, yeah. I mean, we, we did put it in there.
But, but is it, it was, it was in there in addition to the 125 that you put in, or as part of the 125?
It's part of the 125. No?
No. I believe the 125,000 is in the budget for the large grants.
Correct.
In the, uh, in the, uh, other portion of the budget is the 15,000 for the Independence Day Committee, and 10,000 for the Folk Festival.
Right. That was what I was, that's what I was saying. So, so together, the, the Folk Festival and the Independence Day Committee are the 25,000 that make the difference between the 125,000 that I put in for the large grant-
Okay, okay.
And 150 that you were looking here originally. Because you had talked about having 150,000 for all of these. When I moved the 25,000 into the regular budget, I left 125,000 for the remainder. That was the direction I've been given.
But the remainder of the ones there don't add up to 125?
Well, they didn't. They didn't quite.
Right, right. It was like 100 and-
That was your direction, was that you would take 150,000 and you'd work with that, and of which 25,000 were moved into the budget. So you still have 125,000 to work with the list that you have in front of you.
And, and the list, as we left it, totals, uh-
I think it's number you add.
117, 115?
117, 115.
You're looking at the different pages.
Different people had some different-
You're looking at the-
I'm, I'm just looking at the end of the discussion, the summary, the understanding.
Right.
That adds up to, uh- 117, 115.
115.
And we, of, of the 125 that's in the budget. So that's where we left off.
117, 115 plus 25,000.
So there was still a little less than 8,000 left-
Right.
At the end of that discussion, that's in the budget that had, that isn't one of those figures on that page.
Part of it was that, you know, some of the folks had asked for more than-
Right.
What's listed with your group. And so the, the question, I guess, was if you were all in line with them.
Yeah, because the original was like 212, or something like that. So that's where we left off. And so now we need to-
You, you don't have to spin the whole 125 back.
No, no, I, I agree. But now we need to decide if, if where we left it on March 4th is where we're still happy with, whether we want to make any reductions, any additions, how we want to do this. I'll just start off by saying that my sense was that we had removed, um, where's my notes? We had removed, um, 30,000 from the, what was the large grant process in the past for the Main Street money, um, and we had, yeah, maybe that's, maybe that's, was there something else that we pulled that we said was not part of the large grant process, when we went through the large grant process?
The Independence Day Committee and the Folk Festival.
And the folk, okay, okay.
That's why those were so easy to take care of.
That, that's the 25,000.
Right, but that's, that's the 25. But it was the 30,000 Main Street money that we didn't even put as part of this discussion, so that-
Which we have a request for an additional 20.
Right.
And we have already decided on 10,000 for Man Up, which is similar to this, but outside of this process.
Right. So we have additional pieces that used to be part of this large grant process, so that the, where we left it with the 150, uh, and then you, in terms of how, how we used to spend it, and I don't remember what we had for the large grant process in this current year. It was how much?
I don't know, I'm thinking 50,000. Does it-
I think it was 50, but got increased or something.
Yeah. So, but anyway, it was smaller than the 150 plus 30, plus if there was something else. So we've considerably, uh, increased the amount going toward the large grant process, and partly that's a reaction to better outreach to people, and more projects coming in, and bigger amounts asked for. But in, but in terms of the impact on the budget, it's a much bigger pot of money in the budget. And so I'll just say that I, part of my thinking about the reconciliation process, and how we come up with our final budget numbers, is I've been looking for ways to see if there's any way we can kind of scale this overall number back a little. Councilmember Mail?
And I was going to propose the opposite, which is that, um, I'd like to propose an additional $20,000 to the Presbyterian Church, to the Community Kitchen effort. I've had some outreach in the last couple of days from the pastor of the church, from Lord Chakudian, and other members of the effort to try to get a commercial kitchen, community commercial kitchen established at that location. They have very much appreciated the support through this, the support including that councilmembers helped with in the bond fund. They're still working hard to try to get funding through the county's executive's budget for their project, um, but have gotten indication that additional support from the city would be extremely helpful, and showing that the city is also committed to this project. To me, there's a compelling case to be made that this is a, whereas on New Hampshire Avenue, we're funding a, a, you know-
Incubator study.
An incubator, study of an incubator. This is essentially an incubator that's going to be built.
It's happened.
It's, you know, it's, it's an incubator on our, on our western flank, or closer to the western side of the city. And one that's focused on food services, one that's, I think, appropriately focused on trying to create businesses for lower-income residents, small, small microenterprises. It serves a number of other community goals. So I'm supportive of that proposal, and, and would, would propose that additional funding. I'd also add that when I was thinking of, when Councilmember Siemens proposed a $150,000 cap, I was actually thinking of that separate from the Independence Day and the Folk Festival funding. Those, those sources of funding, the, the Old Tacoma funding, I think of as being separate from the grant funding. The other thing I would add is that, my recollection is from last year, that we funded $117,000 worth of projects last year, but that, it's just a, I, I remember, I remember adding up the numbers when we met on this issue last time. And is it, was the, when was the meeting? Was it March 4th?
Mm-hmm.
So I'll, I'll look back on my notes from March 4th, but, but I thought it was somewhere, somewhere over $100,000. But anyway, just going back to my proposal, I, I, I see value in putting funding into this project, given how many other government entities are also committing to it, and given the need to get it, to get it started. I've got some supplemental information that I can share around about sort of where their budget is, how they're focusing their activities to try to help small, small businesses, very small businesses get started. But that's, that's a, that's an addition.
Councilmember Siemens, you have comment on this one, or additional, or separate items?
Kind of both.
Okay.
I, Councilmember Mail highlights something I think would be helpful to us, and that is to understand, for, for any of these that have, uh, money allocated in the county executive's budget proposal, for us to have that information as we look through these, because, as Councilmember Mail said, the Presbyterian Church has a, a proposal, I believe, in there, and, and I believe EduCare also has been included in the county executive's budget. So, again, I, um, think it would be important information to consider that as we, as we look through this. And then I just wanted to comment on the Old Tacoma Business Association request. And I know that's not part of this, but as the mayor said, it is kind of part of this discussion. And I think the, uh, I think when we look at the economic development progress that has been made in the Old Tacoma area, with the limited resources that we've put into that through the Old Tacoma Business Association, and, um, think about the various businesses that have come in, the storefronts have been filled, and, and kind of the quality of the storefronts that are in there now. Um, you know, we've got another new restaurant coming in soon. I, I see great value to the city, not just in, in terms of feel-good for those of us that live here, but also for revenues. So I'm hopeful that we will all consider that as we think about how best to use our limited resources. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
I wanted to, uh, sort of ask some questions of Councilmember Mail, so that I can better understand what, what, what he's describing with regard to the, um, Community Kitchen, which in principle is something that I'm very excited to, about. We're, I wasn't sure if I understood, there's the bond, the bond funding. How secure or definite is that? I know that it was talked about in the budget, in this, you know, legislature, and it was not approved, but yet it was approved, or something like that. Do we, can you clarify that?
Councilmember Brown might be the best person to clarify.
What's misleading in the state legislature with the bond funding is that each of the individual bills in the House and Senate is actually withdrawn. That's the standard practice, and then there's an omnibus bond funding bill that's created. So the bill that was submitted by Sheila Hickson in the House, and the bill that was submitted by Jamie Raskin in the Senate, were voted down, or withdrawn, or something. Instead, the funding is $250,000 for bond funding, so that any money that the city would put in would be going toward that match. So the idea is that if we put in an additional dollar, it would be leveraged, it would leverage a dollar of state bond funding.
Okay, so, you want to say something?
No, go ahead, finish.
Well, so that was, I was trying to figure out the, the contention relationship between the bond fund and any money that we put into the, to the, to this project, as well as any same with regard to the possible money from the, from the county executive. I mean, is, is it an understood, or is it, or explicit that there's, you know, the, the money that comes from the bond fund will be affected by how much the city puts in? I'm just trying to understand that equation.
That's my understanding. And so my understanding is that you've got the $250,000, $250,000 max in the bond fund. The project is then allowed to count some of the, essentially, the in-kind and the real estate value for the project, and I think that's approximately $80,000 worth of, of match that they can count that way. I can't remember if it's 80 or 90,000 dollars.
97,000.
Thank you. So it's $97,000 they can count for match, essentially, from, from the, the place itself, the facility itself. The county executive's budget take, would take, if funded, would take it to another level, in terms of being able to get the bond fund, and then our funding would go further. And, and my, my expectation is that they're also doing a, you know, community-based fundraising, so they're, they're raising and somewhat successfully getting money from individuals who are donating, and then they're planning a, you know, Kickstarter campaign to try to raise whatever remainder exists.
Well, that's my, please, my next question, unless you had something you wanted to insert.
Uh, yeah, to the best of my knowledge, as of last week, as of last week, the private donations totaled $5,500, and, you know, that was in, in progress.
Well, to what, where do they stand in terms of coming up, figuring out what their actual capital budget, as well as maybe startup, working capital, would, would need to be? Or, or are they, is that still kind of like over the horizon right now? No, you know, knowing, coming up and saying, well, actually, to do what we want to do, get it off the ground and make it go, we, we're going to need to have X dollars. Are they near getting to that level of knowledge?
They have a pretty comprehensive-
They have a pretty comprehensive business plan, and I'm going to say game plan for classes, example of a weekly schedule, that I can forward to you. So they've, they've actually gone down the whole line of what they need to make it happen.
I can, I can answer the.
You can probably make.
I think you're talking more about the operations.
Yes.
And you're asking about the capital. They actually included a capital budget in the large grant application to the city, and I have it open in front of me.
Yeah.
And the total capital budget that they included then is four-hundred-and-thirteen-eighty-nine dollars and forty cents, four-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-eighty-nine and forty cents.
So we'll just round that to four thirteen for now. And that's, of course, an estimate.
Of course, yeah.
Which is okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, you know, I happen, no, for instance, the name of the fellow's escaping me, who was involved in a rebuilding of the DC Central Kitchen, you know, much larger facility, was involved in doing this estimating.
So, okay, so that's good to know. Okay. So basically, they've got a ways to go to get all the money that they expect that they're going to need.
Well, they've, they've got a ways to go. They've got a, you know, fantastic state commitment, and they've got a ways to go in terms of being able to actually secure that money because it takes a, you know, it takes a match to get, to get that released.
And you're, so you wanted to increase this figure that we got here by how much?
Ten to thirty, so by twenty.
Next to the last one.
It's ten now, and you want to move it up to?
To thirty.
To thirty, okay.
And if I can ask a question on that point. The ten thousand was for the, basically the construction manager for this project, if I recall correctly?
Yes.
I guess I would ask the acting city manager if you have a sense of whether the funds for the construction manager for a capital project are includeable as matching funds? You know, so that if, so that if the, is, is part of the capital project that gets covered by the, by the state bond and match to cover managing the construction project?
It can be, depending on how it's, depending on how it's structured. If it's, if it's pretty clear that it's all part of the construction project, it comes, it can come out of capital funds.
Noting that we're on camera, I will tell you that a friendly, extremely senior state legislature told me that once these grant bonds are put out, that the scrutiny is not extremely high.
Nevertheless.
In other words, what I mean to say is it's loose.
Having been on the other side of an audit, I will also say that, that it's always prudent to follow the rules. And I do know that, that if it's part of a construction project, and it's all categorized as that, it can be part of the capital budget.
Because I was just trying to figure out whether the ten thousand that we had already talked about and already thought that we would include as, as the funds go forward was able to be part of their match, because my sense was that they were, they had been counting on the seventy, the seventy-five thousand from the county executive's budget, seventy-five thousand from the county council budget for capital projects, and the money that they were, that they had for the in-kind and the, their fundraising to make the match of the two-fifty. And I gather that the seventy-five thousand is not in the reconciliation list for the county council, so they're looking to make that up and whether this ten could be part of that.
Probably.
I think that's accurate. The, the question is open, the seventy-five thousand dollars, Ike Leggett directly told me a week and a half ago, and so did Chuck Short, his aide, that they're pushing for that seventy-five thousand to be sustained in the county, by the county council.
Right.
And I think that it will be. So the question is the money requested of the county council.
Right.
And there, there are active discussions going on with county council members about that.
My understanding was there was a vote today, yesterday?
Where?
In the county council, that it was, that it did not go forward from the, from the committee.
Oh, the committee, yeah, yeah. They, they have a committee that refuses the grant application.
It's, it's, they're still.
That's correct.
Right. There's still lobbying of the full county council, but the recommendation from the committee was not to include that funding. So it's essentially trying to come up with that missing piece of the match.
And just one of the points of discussion that was raised was the level of commitment from Tacoma Park as an argument.
Right.
That was raised against support.
So is that from the city or from the residents?
You're saying that the county council, in discussing it, said, gee, where's the match from the city?
Correct.
I'm saying it too.
And, and I'll just say that.
Does that mean you're voting?
That, that I've been contacted about this and, and said that in general, I was in favor of this and thought it was a good project. I was a little, I'm not sure what the word is. Part, part of my questioning of it was that at various times, when the, when the, our process for what our priorities were in Annapolis or various aspects of what, what we push, what we're identified with, we essentially were not identified with this project. It wasn't a city priority. It was a, it was, you know, the community that was doing it. There was a group of people pushing it, so that we kind of weren't part of that process. And then we had the large grant process, and we had the, the ten for the specific piece of it. So I, I felt like we were doing what was asked of us, and then there's more coming at the end that wasn't part of that process. And we've set up the large grant process saying, you know, apply, here's a deadline, it comes in, we've got a pot, we're going to divvy it up this way. And then we, if we have other pieces coming in at the end, people say, well, you know, why did we apply at the beginning of the process? We thought it was a process. You're not following your process. And, and so I'm, I'm torn between wanting to, and, and understanding how these things work sometimes, and the fact that people have asks in, and they don't necessarily go the way they want them to, and so you have to kind of shift as you go.
This is exactly what happened with Cheer with FY-13 money, where we voted them an additional twenty thousand to make up for money they didn't get from the state.
Right.
It's mentioned earlier, we agreed to send an additional ten thousand dollars to man up. We seem to do this frequently.
Right. And so it just makes me.
Crazy.
Well, that too. But just wanting to understand how we can do our process going forward, the best representing to the people that we're asking, that we're asking for the, for the submittals, to make sure that we're not misrepresenting how we're doing things so that people understand how this works.
Yeah, I would, I mean, and I, I, I feel similarly. And I think, you know, for example, in the future, we could establish, we, we have already made a motion through the March fourth meeting to try to set a limit on the total amount of funds available in future years. I think the intent was, okay, we're going to identify a limit now, but also in future years, when we solicit applications, we would set a limit before we put out those applications. I'd be in favor of, you know, setting a sort of a harder limit to saying that here's the deadline for the proposal, and we're really not going to consider other things. Or if we are going to consider other proposals, that we do it not as an amendment to the grant process, but rather as a, a budget amendment, you know, later on in the year, potentially even talking about offsets. So if we're going to add twenty thousand dollars for some new grant, not, not this one, but, but some new grant halfway through calendar year, or fiscal year fourteen, that we would say, okay, we're going to do that, but we're going to think about the, the fiscal offset. I mean, there's, there's a couple of sort of policy pieces we, we could discuss in future and potentially put in place that would help us further address the process.
And we had also talked about asking the Small Grants Committee if they would be willing to undertake kind of the first step and make some recommendations to us so that it's not essentially a purely political process.
I would like, if I might just, as you go through this discussion, to me, a critical thing to look at is the difference between a request for kind of ongoing funding or funding that you think is going to be ongoing because they're going to do staff with it versus something that is a, a contribution to a capital project or something like that. I think that it's useful, at least to distinguish that as you go through the list.
Good point. Councilmember Grimes.
Well, it, it occurs to me, there was one other, I'll call it an out of band funding request. We sent nine thousand dollars to Edicare back in December, was it, for freezers and so on. I, I like what we did, a few months ago, we did consideration of what our financial status was mid-fiscal year, and we considered doing things like opening the library on Sundays based on our financial picture. We could have a second reconsideration or second round in the middle of the fiscal year, namely, and since we don't convene in December, the end of November or early January or something like that. And I'll note that some of these capital projects, you know, sometimes capital projects have cost overruns and all of that kind of stuff, so they might need more money than anticipated in the beginning, and there could be certain funding that would be contingent in some cases.
Other comments on this, Councilmember Schultz?
I understand that our, from what, in the conversation, and I recall the conversation we had when we were discussing large grants and the small grants, is this need to be fair to anybody who was applying or contemplating applying. When we say, well, there, you know, there's a limit to how much money we have, and so people say, well, that's, we're not going to apply because there's not going to be enough money, or do something like that, that would influence what, how people, what, what organizations make applications and how much they ask for, and that sort of thing. And then only to find out that later, there's, gee, well, there was more money than we were told. I don't think there's a real perfect solution for that. We, we have some of our items here, like the, the Independence Day, Day Committee that we, we give very, not the exact same amount every year, but it's pretty darned close. And they don't, and we all sort of, we know that, it has nothing to do with capital, it's just purely to sustain an institution that we, we love as part of our community. And then there's these, these other things that we, we can be concerned that, that they'll, they'll keep coming back for more money each year, sort of like, you know, my dog, if you give it a dog biscuit, it figures to, well, if there's one, there's got to be more, you know? So it's, it never leaves the kitchen until I yell at it, and then pretty soon it's back again, and it's sort of frustrating.
Maybe you could be our liaison with these groups.
Sure, I think I, I've got the training for that. And, and yet, this particular case, the, the Food Net, the Presbyterian Church Community Kitchen, it's, to me, sort of represents a, a classic, sort of a prototype of the kind of project that the large grants should be used for. Because we know we're going to, say we do give thirty thousand, and maybe we'll give more next year because they'll be in the throes and realize that they need more. But at least we'll know that it's the kind of thing that ultimately this, they'll, it'll be done, and they're not going to be necessarily coming back for large grants in future years, and that there'll be something tangible to show for, for the effort. And I think that's why it's a very worthy application. But given all these various arrangements, I, I understand the need to be fair so that we're to, to, and make, sort of rationalize these grant programs, is probably the best way of putting it. But I'm just not sure that there's an absolute thorough recipe that's going to, you know, come out of the oven perfect every time.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. This is not a fully thought-out idea, often a mistake to put those on the table, but I'll do it anyway. I mean, in some ways, I guess, one of the things I've been thinking about is, would we be better off if we, for example, created a, a public slash nonprofit, nonprofit partnership with something like the Tacoma Foundation, and gave the Tacoma Foundation the money with a set of purposes and a set of requirements about process, and created a distance from, between us and the allocation of money that we create? Would allow us essentially to be, to, to play an oversight job, to play an oversight role, excuse me, as opposed to the actual sort of awarding question. I think, and we talked about this, as the mayor indicated last time, the idea of having the Grants Committee serve that function as well, and I think that's, that, that might be the preferable option, but, but, you know, there are organizations that spend, that, that serve as professionals to allocate, you know, money. Anyway, that's, that's, that's my thought, but it's not, it's only discussion.
I appreciate what councilmember Mail just said about the Tacoma Foundation. I, I have an insider's perspective there, and I, I know that the Tacoma Foundation, for a while now, has been discussing the extent that they're a funding organization and the extent they're a community-building organization. So they'll hold fundraisers, like the Beer Fest notably in the fall. I don't recall what the figure was, but something like four hundred people. And I, I think that the model of being a community organization that solicits contributions and expects contributions from community members works well for them. It helps them stay close to the community. I, I actually am somewhat disturbed, getting away from the Tacoma Foundation, I'm actually somewhat disturbed when community organizations come first to governmental entities, including the city of Tacoma Park, but not only the city of Tacoma Park, for funding. Because I, I guess I have this purist philosophy that says that members of the community should be funding them directly. People have different levels of capacity to give money to community initiatives. Some people can afford more, some people can afford less. When we spend taxpayer money, we're spending the money of all taxpayers, not just the ones who can afford more, and we're making decisions on behalf of taxpayers that, in a way, they didn't, I don't really feel like they authorized us to make those decisions on any large scale. So I, I, I've thought a lot about the relationship with funding organizations like the Tacoma Foundation, and I kind of like the separation, and I wish we would do more to encourage direct giving by community members according to their ability to community initiatives. And I wish we'd see less of these initiatives coming to the city for funding, but, yeah.
Councilmember Siemens.
I'll just second councilmember Grimes' comments, and that's all.
I, I just want to get back to one or two things about the, kind of, more closely to the subject at hand. I think one thing that has become clearer to me in this conversation has been that as we think about how to go forward with the large grant process and how we might want to change how we've set it up for the next round, what, however we do it, it might be good to identify, much as I think the CDBG process does, where there are some guidelines within the overall program that says there are certain areas that get a certain percentage of the money, and that it's limited by that. I'm not even necessarily thinking of the, it, it could be setting up, saying a percentage of the money is for one-time capital projects, and a percentage is for something that is an ongoing need, where with CDBG, they say three, three years in a row, and then there's no more for that particular thing for an ongoing one. So that it might be helpful as we think about what's coming in to point out to people that there are capital projects and that there are ongoing projects, more operational, and that we've, we've decided ahead of time that we want to focus on certain aspects of either one of those that would give some guidelines to them so that they know for the overall pot of money that we think is X amount, that a certain percentage goes to one and a certain percentage goes to the other. And that might be an easier way to give guidelines to them, rather than saying, well, gee, the city says it's going to have X amount of money, and if it, you know, it could all go for one or all the other, and therefore they're thinking that those limitations that councilmember Schultz was talking about, where they do apply or don't apply because of their perception of the parameters of what we're looking for. And then back to the question of the commercial kitchen, one other thing that I'm remembering from some previous discussions about this was when the ZTA discussion. from some previous discussions about this was, when the ZTA discussion came to us, my recollection, please tell me if I'm wrong, is that part of the potential community concern was about parking. And is the parking part of this project budget?
Yes. Yeah. There was, the thought now is to add parking along the side of the gym building, if you can picture that, entered from Tulip Avenue, and I no longer have it in front of me, but that is part of the project that would be funded by the total sum of the state bond funding, and the county funding, and the city funding, and the private funding, and all of that kind of stuff.
So the total match of potentially five.
Yeah, but I, I can't say this authoritatively, but I think that the parking would come, be secondary to building a good kitchen, because there are places to park, maybe not directly on-site, but the county chose, in the zoning text amendment process, not to require parking there. They required a parking plan, but no particular number of parking spaces. So, for instance, there are potential for parking that's been explored in some of the neighbors' driveways, immediately across the street and right down the street, in the privately-owned lot at the corner of Willow and Carol, which is a block away. So in any case, I believe that parking would be secondary when it comes to spending the money that is received through these various sources.
Because I was just trying to think about ways that we can provide, with whatever funding we do allocate to this, providing maximum flexibility for the match, while at the same time trying to address community needs, whether it be more flexibility on the 10,000 that was requested for the, for the construction oversight, or whether it was feasible or worthwhile to say the 20 was for community needs that were more focused on some of those other things, or it sounds like that may not be the best use of the funds. But just trying to explore ways to tie it to community concerns.
And I agree with that. I agree with the intent of what you're proposing, to make sure that it is tied, and if we decide to move forward with it, we have time to get those details right before we make a final resolution on this issue.
Yeah, the parking figure is 58,000 plus, which would be survey, engineering, construction, and so on. That's a fairly substantial amount of money.
Right. But it could be that, that some part of some funding agreement says something about making sure that the parking needs are taken care of in the parking plan, and that doesn't specify that it has to be the construction of whatever is envisioned in that estimate. But if there's any way to tie that to it, it might be of comfort to the neighbors, and make sure that the overall effect of what we're going to do, what we're going to help happen, has the best possible outcome.
I feel compelled to make a comment. The neighbors who have been complaining about parking situations, those are existing parking situations, have a case, a good case, and the parking is due to programming that brings large numbers of people into the facility there. Some of it is very transitory, yeah, people picking up and dropping off at the site there. I think that the, I honestly think that this community kitchen will not add in a real significant way to the parking problems, that people have brought up the parking problems that exist already, because the kitchen initiative has given them an opportunity to bring those problems. And I know that the kitchen has been having, the church has been having discussions with the neighbors to find ways to address, to address these concerns regardless of the kitchen.
I'm feeling like we're at a point where we can say what we want to do about the commercial kitchen, and we can move on to other questions or other suggestions about dealing with the large grant process. So maybe if we can just have a show of hands who are in favor of the addition of the 20,000 to the existing 10,000 for the community kitchen. I'm assuming his hand is going to go up, so we have a unanimous vote in favor of adding 20,000 for that. We also had the 20,000 request from OTBA. Anybody want to remind us of what that request was?
The request was to get $20,000 to make their part-time staff full-time, and that was about all that they said about it, I think.
Sorry, I was distracted. Can you back up a second?
The request was to get $20,000 in addition to the amount that was already in the proposed budget for them, as a way to make their staff, full-time staff. And there wasn't a discussion with them if they expected that to continue. But staffing seems to have some, would imply that they would need to continue to receive funds.
Councilmember, I think Smith was lit first.
Thank you. I would support OTBA's requests, only if there was matching funds from the District of Columbia, and there were additional funds from members. They're doing more programming in DC, and I think DC should put up some money to assist OTBA.
Councilmember.
I completely agree regarding DC. The challenge there is that DC's fiscal year is October 1st to September 30th. In other words, they're three months behind us, and if there's money allocated for fiscal year 14, it won't be until we're well into our next, our own fiscal year 14. So I wouldn't do the $20,000 without that contingency, but I would hope and expect it would be for this year only, that we would revert back to the $30,000 figure after this next fiscal year. And, yeah. Oh, I have another, I want to make an observation, so since I'm waxy philosophical about how people should be giving money to organizations. I also see that certain community organizations that put on events and programs in Tacoma Park are professionalizing those events and programs, which is good, because they're, they run better, and they're more attractive and more interesting, but at the same time, that means they're spending more money on them. So where volunteers used to take lead roles in doing these things, now outside, public relations people, graphic designers are paid, administrative people are paid to do these things. That's an observation, and so there are benefits to professionalizing stuff, but costs that go with it.
I agree.
And I'll add that, another one in that same category, is the Washington at Venice University Family Fund Day. They hired somebody to do it. Councilmember Schultz.
I've spoken about my concerns in regard to the incremental requests from the OTBA, and I still have those same feelings. I mean, it's a question in my mind as to whether or not we want to see the OTBA as a partnership, a public-private partnership, in its essence. It's not set up as a public-private partnership. I mean, we don't, we don't have members of the city staff, or councilmembers, sitting on the board, and so it's not, it's not a true P3, as we would say, but in a sense, it is, it could be seen as a partnership, because we have often said from up here, that if we didn't have the OTBA, we would have to be hiring staff to cause the things to happen, that they have caused to happen, the positive things that they've, they've been able to accomplish over the years, and cumulatively so, you know, constantly adding on to the, to the good things that have accumulated there. Or we just look at it as another one of these things that every year is going to require a certain amount of money. Instead of $30,000 a year, it's going to require more than that in order to sustain it, like the Independence Day Committee, or the Folk Festival, we just give money automatically, and as it grows, they may come back from year to year and say, well, we just need more money, because we want to do more things, and you want us to do more things. And I personally feel that this needs to be the former. It needs to be a working relationship, because it's basically a business association of businesses, notwithstanding that the city and the community, the voters, benefit from a prosperous business community, but we have to keep in mind that the businesses are there, are there to make a profit. And these businesses, whether they're literally members of that organization or not members, all of them are substantially benefiting the same from the existence of this organization, and yet they pay really what I would call nominal dues each year to belong to it. And in fact, in my conversation with Laura Barclay about it, I think she said that almost every, all the businesses there, with the exception of loan, the becoming eligible for loans, gain the same benefits from the OTBA as to whether they're members or they're not members. And that's really, you know, not much of a, of an advantage to cause people to want to join and pay what dues that they do. I suspect, and I have no way of knowing, that a lot of those businesses could afford to pay more than the nominal amount of dues that they do, and I just think that there needs, I just would want to see, to be very frank about it, more of a quid pro quo in this whole thing, before I'd be happy to up the ante to the OTBA.
Councilmember.
Thank you. I would be happy to, I think when they came and spoke with us, they spoke about a need to be more flexible with the programming money for the junction, and I can't remember if it's 15,000 or 20,000 allocated in the budget for the junction programming.
It's 15,000 for the junction program.
15, thank you. So, for example, I would be supportive of moving 5,000 of that from the junction into OTBA, because they're providing much of the organization, organizational capacity to make those events happen. That's one way to deal with some piece of this without significantly, or in fact, actually at all, increasing our overall budget costs. I would, I guess, to go beyond that, I would like to see some of the contingencies that Councilmember Smith had mentioned, the match by DC. So, you know, we could go up by five, but in order to commit, and we could, in the budget, commit up to 10. In order to get to 10, that 10 would have to be matched. And, you know, the money would just be released when, when the DC budget made it available, or when member contributions made it available. I agree with Councilmember Schultz's comments as well, though, and the idea of a partnership. And it occurs to me that maybe one way to deal with this, to sort of incentivize participation, to make it more real, that all businesses are in some way participating, would be that all those businesses pay a, an inventory tax, or property tax, personal property tax. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, we could tie the amount of funding, let's say 10%, for the, from the businesses in the service area of OTBA, whatever the service area happens to be, we could tie 10% of those tax revenues back into OTBA support. Then the businesses themselves, you know, we're essentially, and I can't remember what these partner, these efforts are called, but in other places, there are, there are organizations that are-
Business improvement districts, for instance.
Okay, right. So essentially, sort of, you know, it's almost like a mandatory tax that in turn goes and pays for an institution that-
That's what the Crossroads Development Authority is.
Sure. So, you know, an approach like that might be something we would want to talk about in terms of policy, that would, you know, create more of that structure, frankly, create more predictability for OTBA from year to year, and incentivize, you know, the more successful the businesses are, the more successful the business organization would be. Thank you.
Councilmember Dan is gone.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm in favor of the $20,000, but I also agree with Councilmember Smith that we need to pursue the DC side, because, what is it, it's Poets and Bus Boys, or Bus Boys and Poets, it's coming soon, it's going to be a big business on the corner, and it's in DC. Trove is in DC, even up, up around to Fourth and Butternut are in DC. I don't think any of you all realize how difficult it was to get Old Tacoma Business Association to even venture into the junction before Laura Barclay, and, I mean, Roz tried, she did her best, but nobody at the junction wanted any parts of it, and I joined as a single business owner, so I could push, 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 push the people to get involved. And I'm not sure what the rate of membership is. I know, for me, it was about $150, which is a little expensive for one little person selling little green plants in front of Tacoma framers, but that's what I did, and they got involved, they began to get involved. And whether or not they're, they belong, I don't know. This is our Chamber of Commerce. I mean, this is a portion of it. There's Flower Avenue, there's the Crossroads, there's Maple Avenue. I mean, I know maybe that everybody needs, needs to be working together, but we ask, I ask, as a, as a member of the, of the community, for them to move into the junction. When they did their marketing, their marketing thing, report, there wasn't much about the junction, and I said, "Give me the junction, it's viable." And, and now things are happening all, all over, the whole line, from, from the DC, from DC, all the way, all the way down through the junction. And I fully support the 20,000. I, I do think we need to pursue, someone needs to pursue, I don't know if it's the city council, maybe it is, the Washington DC, even if they have an October the 1st budget deal, but let's go forward with them. You have no idea how exciting it is to see what's going on with, with the people. You have no idea. When all those stores were dead, closed, going out of business, and, and as soon as one closes, they've got somebody else in there. I don't know who they're working with, but they've got somebody else in there that has a viable business happening, that's, that's good. And I can't wait till Danny Wells gets his, I'm not sure what he's naming it, his business open, the new restaurant that's coming in, that's a pretty high-end restaurant. The people in the city asked for high-end restaurants, and it took a little bit of time, they got it. I'm done.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think the difficulty in thinking about this money with the Old Tacoma Business Association is that it's, from my view, more than a business association, it's more than just a Chamber of Commerce.
Yep.
It's really an economic development agency for the city. And, and so I agree with a lot of things that Councilmember Schultz said, and when I'm looking at it from the Chamber of Commerce perspective, I certainly see the, that the businesses should be contributing to the organization, and expect some benefit. But when we get into the realm of the economic development, where I see much of the work that Old Tacoma Business Association has done, I think it is something that goes beyond what's normally expected from business, local businesses. I think it's something that's expected from the local government. And yet, that's why we get in this thing, that if, if they weren't there, then we would have to add staff to our Housing and Economic Development, or Community Development Department, or else we just wouldn't do it, which is, I think, what happened- or else we just wouldn't do it, which is, I think, what happened prior to their existence. So, yeah, I see benefit in the District of Columbia contributing their, what I think people have called their fair share. But maybe the restriction is to designate that the funds be limited to the Maryland portion of Tacoma Park. And then I guess the only other thing I wanted to say is that the Old Tacoma Business Association has certainly grown over the past years since we first started to fund that or provide funding for it. And so, one of the things that I would like to see, well, two things. One is, you know, I support the request for the twenty thousand dollars, but I would like to add on that they need to come back to the council within a specific period of time with a updated business plan and that that business plan focuses the majority of their energy on economic development.
If I can just add a quick comment or two and try and sum up where I think we are on this. I agree with the comments that make it that we should look for a contribution from the district government to OTBA. I think it's entirely appropriate to look to OTBA to figure out the best mechanism to get more of the local businesses that are in that geographic area to be contributing members of OTBA to kind of legitimize the benefits that they get from the organization. We know that Tacoma Langley CDA has a different model that makes sure that all of the businesses and all of the property owners are members. And I think that, given that we already have the thirty thousand dollars that is not part of the large grant process, in my mind, I almost kind of think of that as the economic development piece that OTBA is doing. And then this twenty thousand additional request is therefore, should be, it's right that it should be tied to some of these contingencies that we've talked about. And so, I think going, I think it would be a good idea, and I think the council is supportive, to say yes to the twenty thousand, but to put contingencies on it. And I think one of the things that we can think about as we're thinking about how we look at economic development and how we can do it citywide is that, given some of the discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago about economic development and trying to pull together something to talk about it, we've been thinking about trying to pull something together either for, at this point, we're looking at either May 28th or June 10th, I think are the two dates, which would be a Monday night, which would not be a council meeting, but which could be some kind of forum on economic development, where we get some people coming in, talking to us, where it's an opportunity to be in this room with members of the public and with us in a little different format, so that we're not ganging up another meeting in the week, as we've been doing a lot of lately. And trying to do something like that relatively quickly, so that we begin to understand some of these things as a group in going forward. So, is it the will of the group that we add the twenty thousand with contingencies to be worked out later? I'll just, I'll put that out there, and the city manager has a quick response, and then I'll go to Councilmember Schultz.
Just wanted to be clear. I mean, we've got thirty thousand in the regular budget. We've also got fifteen thousand in the regular budget for Tacoma Junction-related activities for them, so this would be an additional twenty thousand. So, just want people to be clear what's out there for that.
And Councilmember Mail made a proposal that, I think, said that five of the fifteen would be part of that-
I would actually do a max of ten and have five of the fifteen available right away, five of the ten available right away, and five after, five, up to five to match another ten from somewhere else. They need twenty, right? The goal is to get to twenty. So, I would give five without strings attached. I would give another five with strings attached.
And the string being that they would have to find ten thousand somewhere else?
Correct.
From DC government, from other businesses?
So, you're saying you would give ten thousand of city money, and they'd have to find ten thousand somewhere else?
I'm saying-
With five without contingency.
Ten thousand dollars of city money, five without contingency from the fifteen, from the junction. And-
Double counting.
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused, because I had thought you were saying that of the fifteen that is in the budget for Tacoma Junction programming-
Right, strike that last piece. I would give them ten, five without contingency, five with the contingency that it had to be matched.
So, they ask for twenty, and you'd give them ten?
I would. And if they, you know, fail to be able to find a match, then partway through the year, we can talk about it again.
But I'm sorry, so you wouldn't touch the fifteen that's in there for Tacoma Junction programming already?
Well, I thought I was going to get in trouble for double counting if I did.
You will.
I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to scratch.
That's where you ended up, was there's the fifteen in the budget for Tacoma Junction programming, and Councilmember Mail is saying, and the thirty is there, and then saying, adding an additional ten, five with no contingency, five with a contingency. Councilmember Schultz.
One of the factors in this request is that they're looking for this money to add staff capacity.
That was their point, that's what they wanted.
And that, of course, is an ongoing expense, because once you've created that staff capacity, then each fiscal year for them, they've got to find the same amount of money. So, I think we don't, I think that if we, we have to build in the contingencies that, like, we're talking about here, that we've been all sort of saying, getting money from DC or making it a match, like Councilmember Mail is saying, or something like this. Because otherwise, where are they going to get the twenty thousand next year? They have to increase their sources of income, whether they get it from DC or they say to their members, "Hey, we've got to raise our membership fees." I mean, that's up to them to figure out how to do that. And I think this is the way to do it, is to sort of say, "We understand your needs to grow, but we're not going to be paying for twenty thousand dollars in executive director salaries for more than one year."
Or we could add the money to our Housing and Economic, or Community Development staff and let them just be a Chamber of Commerce and fund it on their own through the businesses.
You know, I do think we have an obligation to subsidize the organization to some degree. Absolutely, no question in my mind.
I think we're all on the same page. Councilmember Grant.
Well, I don't think Councilmember Seaman says, but regardless-
But he recognizes that that would cost us more money.
Well, let's recognize that last year, we signed a three-year agreement with OTBA that called for thirty thousand dollars a year. So, we have, after this next fiscal year, we have one year remaining on that agreement. Am I stating that correctly?
I'm not sure.
I think it was a two-year agreement.
I thought it was three. Well, in any case, I wasn't, I was going to hold this remark, but I'll make it now, which is that I support continuing the baseline thirty thousand dollar funding, I'll say indefinitely. But if we put contingencies that are, on funding that's beyond that, I don't want to be in the situation where, yeah, say they get some money from DC, and then they come back to us next year and they say, "Okay, you matched this DC money, match it again." I don't want to match it again. I want to revert after this next year, whether we do things with or without contingencies, the extra money. After this year, I want to revert to our thirty thousand dollars, which is what we agreed with OTBA last year. I'm pretty sure it was for three years.
And that's where laying out ahead of time to people, what rules we have for funding ongoing expenses is very helpful. So, I'll say Councilmember Mail's proposal is on the table, and why don't we see where we are on that? And if we have that, then we can move on. So, the proposal is five without contingency and five with contingency for an increase to ten of ten in the addition to the thirty, which is kind of separate from this part. And the fifteen, and the fifteen, which is also separate from this part.
As a one-timer as well.
Well, it's one-time because we're putting it in the FY14 budget. So, all those in favor, raise a hand. Two, three, four, five, all those opposed? And it looks like it's five to one to one. So, at this point, we are at, let me just figure this out, we were at one seventeen, one fifteen of the one twenty-five, and then we've just added twenty, and we've added ten, correct? So, now we're at one forty-seven, one fifteen, plus the twenty-five that was already put in other places. So, we're twenty-two, one fifteen over our one fifty cap that we had put on there. Are people happy with that? Yes?
I want to go back to a comment about an additional ten thousand dollars for Man Up.
Oh, right.
And I don't have that in front of me, so I sent a text to Greg, but I haven't heard back from him. I mean, he had put five thousand in his budget for that. So, had there been a vote by the council then to put an additional ten thousand for Man Up and add it to this account, or it's from a different place?
It was in the reconciliation, my request for fifteen thousand.
Didn't we do one of those, one of those votes to add it, instead of just an individual council member saying we should add it? I think we did.
Yeah, I'm just, I just didn't have it in my notes, so I need to, I mean, I did hear-
You're wanting to know whether it needs to go in here.
And I think those things have been on the-
First of all, was it approved? And then, second, where does, does it go out of the large grant, or does it go somewhere else? I don't care, I just need to know.
I think we had it on the reconciliation budget, and I think we did agree to put it on there. And we will discuss it when we do that.
And did I not put that? I had put on the, I had put on my, on the list to increase the money to Man Up for an additional fifteen thousand, but you're saying-
It's an additional ten.
Well, it's really additional ten, because in the budget, it's five, but I want the total to be fifteen.
Okay, I didn't understand that.
So, it's an increase.
And so, I had not included that as part of the one hundred and twenty-five. I had considered it a different kind of a item on the reconciliation budget. I don't care where you all put it, but that's how I had recorded it.
So, it is, yeah, okay. So, that on the second page from the back of the first packet item, it's increase it to fifteen from five. Is that where we are?
That's the idea.
Increase by ten.
But we haven't done anything with that.
That's right, it's just on the-
Increase by ten from five?
Yes.
So, then we're back to, was there anything else that we needed to discuss about the large grant process that we haven't already taken care of? And if that is the case, then are we happy with the one forty-seven, one fifteen as the large grant budget item, which would increase from one twenty-five? So, it's an additional twenty-two, one fifteen.
What about the Crossroads Community Food Network?
Well, that's, I'm looking for, was there anything else?
Thirty thousand. About thirty thousand, thirty thousand.
Right, so just to be clear, you're taking from the page three of the minutes where it's the twenty thousand for cheer, the thirty thousand for Crossroads?
That's where we had left off last time. And I'm saying, is there anything else different we have added to that?
Got it.
From tonight's discussion? The twenty and the ten. Is there any other change to those figures?
I just wanted to say that I criticized the Crossroads, even though it's in my side of town, because I was concerned with the original application. We did not have any information to know to what extent the money that they were going to be spending from our grant would be directed to city residents as opposed to residents outside the city of Tacoma Park. And I got some assurances by email that, oh, definitely, all this money is going to be for people in the city of Tacoma Park, but I never got really any solid, anything to sort of substantiate their saying.
They gave us this handout here that you printed.
Yes.
They also sent it to each of us by email. So, that business about, that's addressed on the, here, yeah.
Well, this, again, it has very broad statistical things about the US census and hunger rates and look-
But read this sentence, it's a little, I'm not sure how helpful it is, but in 2012, nearly one-third of our total sixty-three thousand press checks went to Tacoma Park residents.
Yeah, and that's, you know, but, so I guess, are we were to project from that, that of the thirty thousand we might give to them, one-third of that would go to Tacoma Park residents, and the other twenty would not? I mean, I, there's just-
Because they provide transportation.
It goes back to the, we're talking about criteria earlier about large grants, because some of these organizations are, and the Community Food Network here is a perfect case. It's been so successful, I mean, no question about its success, that it's grown much larger than the city of Tacoma Park from whence it started. And when you have organizations like that, we need to be able to ask them, and they need to be able to give us the answers as to how this money gets used exclusively for the benefit of Tacoma Park residents. It just, you know, I mean, there's a lot of needy people around, but it's not our job to take care of all the needy people on the other side of the Tacoma Park boundary, as cruel as that may sound. So, I don't know how to vote for this.
Are you proposing to lower it?
Well, yeah, absent the information that I thought we were going to get, I guess that's what I would do.
Well, that, yeah, that's kind of the same feeling I was having with, you know, some of the questions about, well, what are the organizations getting from the county, the money they're getting from the county? Are we going to get that additional information before we vote on this, or are we going to do this tonight? That's the question.
I was looking for if we had closure tonight. If we don't, then we need more information.
I certainly, I mean, I had sent out, I think, at one point, the grants that were in the proposed county executive's budget. I'll go back and find it and make sure it comes down. And then, but that would be something that you would have the details for Monday night. I don't have them right this moment.
Councilmember Schultz, could I ask something?
That's my problem.
A follow-up question. I guess I had thought we had the same issue with Educare Support Services, but I just don't remember if you, did you feel like we got enough information on that side?
A couple of us, not including me, visited Educare, and so I kind of backed off in that regard. But that could be an example, because it's physically located.
But Educare is, I don't know if you get their email, they're opening up a center in Hyattsville, I believe it was? Maybe someone else remembers. I remember seeing that they're working on opening up another distribution center. And, you know, they'll run that with a single administration, and that'll muddy the waters and all this kind of stuff.
And I have to disclose that I'm working with Educare to open a distribution center at Essex House. So, they will be in the heart of Tacoma Park.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, each, we have to conclude is that each applicant is kind of unique. You can't say that Educare's like the Community Food Network. And with regard to my concerns that I'm expressing, but can we sort of put this in a pending position for tonight? Till we get-
We can, we have, we're almost there. We have that question at the end. I'll remind folks that what we have as far as budget reconciliation process set up is that after- is that after tonight, we don't have any more Thursday budget work sessions.
Oh, no.
Oh, pooey.
But what we do have are the next two Monday nights, no?
Yes.
Yes, the next two Monday nights, April 29th and May 6th, where the bulk of the meeting is dedicated to budget reconciliation. That's more the case on the 29th, and a little bit less the case on the 6th.
Yeah, I guess my request would be that if the items can be identified tonight, as best as possible, we'll do the best we can to actually have money amounts associated with each, so that on Monday night, you can narrow this down pretty close, and then you'll have, you know, something working to go forward with. It's possible, if you're really good at that, that we don't have to even discuss it on May 6th. And then on May 13th, we can just come with the budget ordinances. So, you know, it's, I'm willing to do what it takes to get the money amounts for Monday night, if you've pretty much got a list. And then there's plenty of chance to tweak it and, as you need.
Because we always kind of get to this later in the evening than we want. And so tonight was an attempt to get at this early on, and just spend time on the budget, and have an opportunity for everybody to make any last requests, so that we get all those monies associated with everything. And people can put out their thoughts on the way they want things to go. But I think we needed the dollar amounts associated with everything, so that we can do that final reconciliation.
Right, and what I can do for the, even for this large grant discussion tonight, is have the chart, so that if you want to adjust the monies after you look at what was the county's grants, and that kind of thing, you can do that.
Okay, so we have finished with that discussion of the large grant applications, and we'll take a short break, and then we'll come back for additional requests and identification of potential reconciliation items, and see when that takes us. So, requests for additional information, identification of potential reconciliation items that can have a number put next to them. I'll go, I've got a couple of questions. I just, the, let's see, have we covered that? We covered that. Do we have a figure for, I heard some potential interest on the part of some council members last time about whether the, if the library hours go forward for the opening on Sunday? Do we know approximately the proportion of the increase in the personnel costs that are associated with that? Because the total increase for the department was like 111,000.
I'll find out, I'll need to look at it closely. I don't have it right off the top.
And whether, if that didn't go forward, whether the library security gate at 9,000 in the CIP is something that would need to happen independent of that?
My recommendation would be that we would want to look for a library security gate, essentially the two security gates, for those times when you either want the library and computer center open when you don't need to have the community center open, or vice versa. Just because it really helps in limit the number of staff that's required if one of those sections is needed or not.
So, no matter what happens with potential funding at this point, it's a good capital investment to make to give a lot of flexibility and reduction of costs going forward in plenty of circumstances?
It does give us some real flexibility, especially for special events, or that kind of thing.
Where somebody just comes in to do something, like to open it for Sunday for a special event in here?
Right.
Okay.
But I still need to get the cost of Sunday hours. You want, I don't think I have specified that out clearly.
And then, I just, as I was going through, looking for potential areas to adjust funding. We have the 600,000 in ADA retrofits, and then we have the new sidewalk design and construction and traffic calming for 400,000. And that's in the general fund. And that's money that was in the...
In the Speed Camera Fund.
In the Speed Camera Fund. So it's new in the general fund, new back in the general fund this year.
Yes, the amount is not different. I will say that the amount for the sidewalks and traffic calming of 400,000, you know, is pretty limited. And so as you get, as you go through the projects, and depending on how people are advocating for it, you know, that might come close to having to come back to you, you know, or have things that get put off till FY15. But I just kept the same amount that we've had for this year, for next year. And that's pretty much what we had budgeted in terms of projects.
And then there was the Ethan Allen Gateway Streetscape at 105, but that's the first of multiple year on that.
Yeah, actually, some of it's in the current year. And then, because we've been paying for the design and...
So it's...
This is the completion of that.
Okay.
Of that part of the project. And next week, there will be a discussion of the, I guess next Monday, of possible grant proposal related to that as well.
Okay. The Tacoma Junction Streetscape Plan is in there for 250, and then there's a BY Morrison Park Study at 30,000. So, just one thing I thought about as I was looking at that was whether, if we were looking for some reductions, there was the possibility to kind of combine that and say, well, does the 30,000 for the BY Morrison Park Study fit within the 250 Junction Streetscape Plan? So it was just a thought that I had.
Yeah, and just...
Is there a reason why they were separate?
I don't know why they were separate. Somebody else here may know. But just to be clear, the thing that says Tacoma Junction Streetscape is kind of mislabeled, because it really isn't a streetscape, it's a kind of an area planning process. And I don't know the answer about the BY Morrison.
So if there's anything you can come up with on that, that would be helpful. I just have two more. The 1.3 million contribution to the Equipment Replacement Reserve. A lot of times, we get a projection of what the Equipment Replacement Reserve is going forward. Did we get that? Where we get the, you know, what goes in, what comes out, what level of funding gets us to what in what year?
I had something. I'll see if you got it, but I'll make sure it gets back out to you.
Because I just, I didn't remember seeing it, but I'm not swearing it's not there.
The recommended level through the formula is the 1.3 million, and I wanted to keep as much as possible to the recommended formula.
And the recommended formula was...
It's always based on, yes, on what's coming up versus...
But it was the updated formula this year? Or it was based on something that we did last year or the year before?
It's updated.
Okay. So it's, there's a whole spreadsheet that does this, and it spits out a number that says you'll need this to, if your target is to have adequate funding X number of years out, you need to put in this much.
That's right. It gets refigured each year, and as we get updated information, as we purchase things, we change those outline amounts sometimes, because you find out that some technology that used to cost, you know, 100,000, some equipment that costs 100,000, now you can get it for 50,000, where we can adjust it and say, and other times, something jumps up and you need to adjust it, so.
Right, right. And the final question was the 100,000 extra for the police pension. Where that figure came from?
Close call.
It was out of the sky.
You said blue sky.
Well, I mean, there were a number of suggestions about increasing payments to it. I thought that that was a substantial increase, but not a too large of an increase. So it was my recommended amount to add to it. Being cautious with funds, but trying to help that out.
And it needs help because it's a relatively young fund?
It does. We have always made the amount that the actuaries have recommended. There's been one time in the past when we added a little bit more to it to help it out. We talked to the actuaries about adding another 100,000. They thought that'd be great. But it's certainly not required to have a healthy fund. We've been making good progress on it.
Did you say a healthy fund?
Mm-hmm, it is. We've gotten, we're down, you know, we're making 8% returns, which is very unusual. It's making its way, but it is a young fund. It's only about 10 or 11 years old. And so it's, I think it's 40% funded. And that's how these things go. You work up to them. We're following the advice of the actuaries.
So, those were questions that I had as I went through looking for some potential places to make adjustments. I don't know if you want to put notations of those on the reconciliation list. My feeling is...
Do you want, well, if you have a recommendation about them, that's fine. But do you think they should all be on the reconciliation list?
I don't feel like they have to be, but I just wanted to put out there that those were areas that I was looking at, and they're areas where if we needed a number, we could go to those. I don't think we necessarily have to assign a number on the reconciliation list.
But I just, there's two or three of those already on the list of questions that...
That's right.
Okay, I just...
But the BY Morrison Park is not on there, and I would put it on there.
I was just trying to come up with where I would do some takes. Councilmember Daniels, come in.
Thank you, Mayor. On the general fund removals, can we have, you know what I'm going to ask? A little more information on removing Emergency Management Coordinator halftime position? How much is that going to cost? What, I guess, what's the, can we, I ask what the job description is? You know, I mean, I think it's something that, if you haven't been on the Emergency Preparedness Committee, and you didn't live through Snowmageddon and other things in the city, you don't understand what that's all about. And the, I think you said about cutting the .16, you're going to look into the library, right? The FTE in the library?
That was the request.
Okay, okay. That's, check me off on that one, too, with the big check.
For the .16?
Yeah, to dropping, you know, cutting, doing the cut there. I don't, I want to see...
Yeah, I mean, that's the instruction, that .16 is the instructional assistant for the Computer Learning Center. If you want to have, you know, out of the whole pot, we'll look. I have been asked to come back with some discussions about ways to cut FTEs. So I'll include that.
But my request was the cost of the .16.
I understand that.
Okay, okay. Councilmember, mail.
Thank you. I wanted to just sort of clarify a couple of things that are already on your list, reconciliation items that I had mentioned. I identified these through, well, really four different potential FTE changes. I would be perfectly happy for the city to make its own suggestion in terms of FTE reductions, but those were my suggestions. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I understood that, and I haven't come back with my, you know, different kind of combinations for that yet.
Sure.
I did understand.
I had also, in here you have Add Halftime Sustainability Specialist.
These are already on the list.
Really, my goal is to increase the sustainability budget from 190 to 250. And, you know, my intent would be that, I think it makes sense to use that for a position, which could be a contractual position or not. But that's the ultimate intent.
Okay, so from 190 to 250?
250, yeah.
Per position?
No, for the sustainability budget. So that the, you know, we had previously, I believe, for two years, we funded that program at $200,000 a year. The first year, very little, if any, was used. Last year, a portion was used, but I don't know from the city what portion of the $200,000. But I also know that the Brendel, I heard from Daryl, Ms. Brithwaite, that $40,000 of the Brendel contract will be continuing into the next fiscal year.
Right, so out of the 190, 40,000 is for them, and 150 for some other amount.
And so my intent in taking that money up to 250 is that it's 250, essentially minus the 40 for the Brendel contract that we awarded last year, essentially just leaving $200,000, well, $200,000 plus 10. So I see that as a very modest growth in the fund for, you know, the program functions that the Brendel Group is supposed to be coming up with. So that's the intent behind that particular ask. I would, after more consideration, happily take all the funding out of the Paper Street project from a 20 to a zero. I think it could be something we discuss in the future at some point. And then, after that, maybe put it in the budget. But it's not, for me, it would not be a priority in the near term, or in this budget cycle. And I think that's all I'll point out for now. Oh, I'm sorry. And then the other piece that I would put on the reconciliation, which I think is, was implied, at least in some of the questions we had last time, was the cost of a one-cent reduction in the property tax rate. Thank you. I'm sorry, one, never mind, I don't need to answer now.
The one cent, is that what you were going to say?
The one cent, yes, but I was going to ask a different question, but I'm not going to.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And if I can just make one quick comment on the Paper Street project. I can't remember whether this came up when it came up before, but the benefit of that can be if the paper streets go away, the city loses the responsibility for maintenance. So the ongoing cost to not doing that is the continuing maintenance cost. Councilmember Smith?
I just have a couple of things that I just would like more clarification on. One is for the general government regarding passport services. In FY12, we brought in 42,650, and it drops our proposed FY14 to 35,000. Is there a reason, do you know why it dropped and why it's not increasing?
Actually, I don't know. That's fascinating to me, because it has been going up, although there was a change in the amount that we were allowed to collect per passport. So I'll find out and get to the answer.
And is the reason why we don't make more and more money from this service because of capacity, or...
The, we...
Because our community is so international and...
Yeah, the primary restriction has to do with what the Department of State requires. And they only allow us to collect a small amount of money per... and they only allow us to collect a small amount of money per passport. I think there is an intent of getting an additional passport agent, just kind of rearranging staff a little bit to do some of that. But we, it's not a huge revenue generator. It is a good generator of people coming into this building and finding out other programs and things that we have and services, and it's been a nice, it's been nice for that reason for Maryland.
Right. I would like to talk about the pay stations that are going in, the new ones. What is the estimated revenue from those new pay stations, and when will they pay for themselves?
For the parking pay stations? I don't know. I'll find out.
Okay. And I just would caution us to look at the rec department's budget. At the last council session, we did note that their increase in expenditures keeps going up, and their revenues are flat. So I would just make sure that we pay close attention to what's going on in the rec department.
Yeah, the new information that was provided, if you look through that a little more closely, then we can follow up on that. I'll double check, but it does show more of an increase than was originally kind of...
Right. I saw that. I looked at it, but it's still costing a lot of money, you know, from the city's perspective. Thank you.
And I'll make an editorial comment there. It tends to be because we, the council, say we have these things that we want you to do, and we don't want you to charge for them.
Yep.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Right. This may not be the right question to ask at the right time, but I know that very soon, Fourth, New Hampshire Avenue is going to be its very own traffic calming device. And are those, I see speed camera revenues. Are those cameras going to be moved, maybe up higher on New Hampshire Avenue where there's a lot of speeding rolling down the hill?
The, the speed corridors will allow us to move the cameras.
Okay.
We've been informed that we won't be getting additional cameras until we see how those work, that the current ones that we have that then move to a different location. So we're uncertain about how the revenue is going to work on those, so we're just being very cautious.
Because to keep people safe, maybe we need to get them to, I shouldn't say get them to speed more, but...
No. We're looking very carefully at, you know, where we need to calm traffic the most, given the placement of the construction, given how the different hills are. So that's really what we're looking at.
Okay, cool.
To try to place them appropriately.
And that prompts me to just provide a quick update from the MML Legislative Committee meeting that I chaired yesterday. We had a visitor who talked with us for an hour, Chair Maggie McIntosh of the Environmental Matters Committee, and we had...
Were about the 410 bill?
Yes. We also had a long, long discussion about speed camera legislation. And the message from that discussion was the speed camera legislation, as amended, made it through the House, made it through the Senate to sign and die, and was filibustered at the last minute by Senator Pipkin. Nobody claims to know why that was successful. Everybody was amazed that the speed camera bill did not pass, and they said everyone should assume that that bill and potentially other amendments to it will come back early next year in the session to avoid that last minute problem. And everybody should be on their best behavior and make their best case on all of the speed cameras, and that what is needed is publicity about all the good that they're doing in terms of speed reduction and accident reduction. And I always, my poster child is always the, our police department report that showed that on the New Hampshire Avenue, I never remember the exact figure, but it was like 4, was it 413? I think it was 400 and something in the two years prior and like 10 in the two years after.
It's been remarkable.
And so any additional information we have like that is a good thing to get out there and make sure that everybody knows that, because there are still a lot of people who would like to see the whole speed camera program go away.
Oh, yeah, no question.
And that will come back early next session. Councilmember mail.
I'm sorry, I just had a couple of follow-ups. I didn't quite understand what you were saying to Councilmember Daniels Cohen about the speed cameras, that we're only going to, we've got a fixed number. We're not going to get any more cameras. Is that...
We have the authority to get more cameras, but the company that puts, places them sees, once they put one out there in a corridor, they see how that's working before they make a determination to add another one. And they see what effect that has and how the patterns go.
So you mean within, so we have two new corridors with zero cameras in each one right now?
No, we have a camera in each, we have cameras in them. This is New Hampshire Avenue and Carroll.
University.
And...
Ethan Allen.
Okay. Actually, let me go back and look at the information, but we're not creating, we're not creating new areas, new roads. We're expanding from the places where they are now, an opportunity to move within a larger section.
So I just wasn't aware, I guess, there's already a camera on University. I thought that was one of our zones. Okay.
You haven't found it yet.
Apparently not.
Very good. I'm glad you have not found it.
It took me a while to find it.
We had briefly talked, last year, we had some small amount of money in for the larger recycling bins. That came up in, I think, one of our, maybe probably at the Public Works discussion, and I believe Ms. Braithwaite's comment back in regard to Councilmember Grimes' question was, we assume that if we were going to do that again, we could put it in the sustainability budget. That suggested to me that we didn't need to make an allocation for that purpose in this budget. If we do need to make such an allocation, then I would support one at the sort of the same level of funding that we put in last year, and I would propose that if we were going to do it again this year, that it be for essentially a 50% subsidy. We just, you know, discount the bins at a 50% rate, get 200 bins instead of 100, but I don't know that we need to do that in the budget. I just, I can't remember that conversation.
Yeah, I think she, I think her preference was to use some of the sustainability section for that. If that's okay with you, then we will do that.
Okay. And then I wanted to comment, I'm sorry, where is the line? Because, oh, shoot. Oh, I'm sorry, there it is. The planning associated with Tacoma Junction, because there were a couple of different comments and proposals around that planning, I just wanted to say, I support the concept of the planning, because I know it's, you know, I think Mayor Williams made this comment a couple of years ago, maybe, when he said that, you know, he remembers being, 15 years ago, being part of planning efforts around the junction and trying to figure out a future vision for the junction.
25 years ago.
25, there we go, another decade on to the number I just gave. And I really see the value of a plan like this in coalescing, by putting an idea on the table. And my understanding of the process is it would involve community meetings. It's not a consultant off by themselves who would come up with something. But literally by putting together a proposal that has designs that people can literally see and almost touch, it gives the community something to react to, as opposed to what I feel like has often gone before, you know, rightly, because it's the limitations of us doing this through a committee process, is you've got, you know, a whole bunch of much more abstract visions of what could be done there. So I just wanted to say that I support that project in general, but I'm also interested in ways that we can, if we, there's ways to reduce the cost between the park and the junction planning piece. I'm supportive of that, but I do support the overall intent of the project. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I would like to add one thing to the reconciliation list. For it to be considered in the housing and community development budget, I'd like $20,000 in that budget allocated to a citywide anti-litter campaign, because my constituents continue to bring up this issue, and Councilmember Grimes mentioned it on Philadelphia. But I think it would be good if we could, you know, maybe an educational program, maybe put some signage up in problem areas, letting people know they shouldn't litter, and reinforce that with some ticketing by the police department. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes?
Again, it's a little bit more of the policy question. We opened this, tonight's meeting, talking about the cable franchise agreements, and I think it was Councilmember Schultz who talked about, you know, why is or isn't this in a special fund? So I don't know where I'm going with this comment in particular, but I guess I don't quite understand why it wouldn't be a special fund, why we wouldn't want to set it up that way.
Yeah, I mean, I think our goal is to, that because of the size and also because of the general kind of direction to, for governmental funds, that you don't have too many different governmental funds, that the recommendation from the finance director is it really should just be a special revenue account that we work with from that. So it would be identified as a distinct special revenue account in the special revenue fund.
So it would be special revenue fund?
No.
That's likely to be what it would be. It wouldn't be its own cable revenue fund. It would be part of...
It would be one of a number of funds in the special revenue funds budget.
Right. And already, the capital fund in the special revenue fund is the only fund balance. That, if you look at the special revenue fund, it has a fund balance. That amount is solely the amount of the cable capital money that's sitting in the bank.
Councilmember Schultz.
That's all right.
A reminder that we will have the bulk of the meeting next Monday, only a few days from now. For reconciliation, we hope to have numbers attached to all of the pieces, and then it's, we get to move the pieces around and figure out what we want to do.
I've got one more question.
Yes?
I believe Ms. Braithwaite talked about partnering with the Center for Watershed Protection again, but I don't remember if there was a dollar amount associated with that. Could you have her report back to us on the dollar amount associated with that project?
Yeah, I think there was a dollar, but I'll find out what it was.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Can we, can you tell us, Ms. LaLa, what we're going to see from you next week? Obviously, we have this sort of a very brief list here tonight, which I understand is kind of just a sketch out that's already been added to. Well, I would hope that this stuff will be elaborated a little bit more, a bit more descriptive.
Okay.
So that we can understand, oh, I don't know, just like it says, helping person related to code enforcement.
Well, that was my, trying to take Terry's comment and not having good language, but...
Yeah. I'm sure I'm going to vote for it because Terry wants it or suggested it, but I just don't have a clue.
You have bad language?
I'll try to flesh these out so I have a little more description.
So that we really know what we're talking about here before, and we don't have to waste time.
What do you care what we're talking about if you're going to vote for it?
I wasn't picking on that one. It was just the first one that I saw.
I'll do my best. I mean, we are limited in time.
No, I'm not looking for like a blue sheet on each one of these things.
No, no, but I'll put a few sentences.
A little expanded spreadsheet.
Okay.
Since I have nothing to do this weekend, I'll fill that up.
Well, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Mall again.
And it relates back to Councilmember Smith's comment before. I see a few places in the budget, rec department most notably, where, but it's also associated with CCTV, where the narrative talks about because demand has expanded, we therefore need more hours. And it would be my expectation that we would not, that would not be the approach that we take, that we try to limit demand for, like we just talked about for large grants, limit demand for use of this room, or costs for programming for this room, not always grow recreation program or after-school program demand, just because, you know, or grow capacity just because there's more demand.
Yeah. The proposed budget does not expand capacity for any of those programs, and if there were something that were to be added, we would come back to you for that and to find out. I mean, the couple of things that are there are things that already there was kind of capacity added, either this current year, like the afternoon addition program, or just about a year and a half ago or so, two years ago with this facility, that because that wasn't just like a spurt in demand, but it's been an ongoing amount, it's kind of changed the nature of the positions. But I absolutely would want to bring back anything that looks like it's the possibility of increasing capacity to get more people, which means more staff. I think that's something that, you know, you need to give direction on.
And were you finished?
Yeah.
Just a quick comment on that point. One of the things that was pointed out to me today that is a benefit of the community kitchen is that it essentially takes some one-time funding to create something that will provide jobs for people, so that it's a better one-time infusion of money to do that than to have ongoing need for social programs to help take care of people. So it's that kind of benefit analysis that can be very helpful. I feel like I'm in the mail Schultz continuum here. Councilmember Schultz has his light on again.
It's called the Mail Strong. Speaking of recreation, one of the things that, I guess I would say first is that appreciate Greg Clark's preparation of so much valuable information since last Monday. But I think one of the things I would want to be able to see is to see sort of a summary, brief though it could be, of what are, what the fees that we do charge for the various programs. Because as I said at the last council meeting, it is somewhat like a business, and when you've got more customers knocking down the door than you've got widgets to sell, that's a signal that you need to, you know, you may have an opportunity to raise the fees, but it's not, as I said, also, it's not a business. It's a service, and we have the council, certainly the last city council made a very strong point of its belief in affordability. So that's the balancing factor.
Yes, we can provide...
You should have the fees for the programs in the program guide.
They have.
Yeah, so you could refer to that. That doesn't tell you how many people actually attend a class that has capacity 20 or, you know, whatever, but tells you what they're expected to pay.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
No more lights.
Not anymore. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
And a reminder, people...